I call to order a public hearing for the 2014 tax year proposed property tax rate. And we're starting at 10:14 a.m. on September the 8th, 2014. Again, present at the public hearing of the five voting members of Bowie County Commissioner's Court. If you've not already done so, make sure and sign in on the attendance sheet. While I'm thinking of it also, right now, would you check and make sure that your cell phone or electronic device is silenced? And please don't take or make any calls during our sessions this morning. Everyone, welcome to speak. If you do speak, ask you to stand and identify yourself by name and address. And what I'm going to do in this case is, nobody Thursday night spoke five minutes. But just so that everybody gets a chance to read, put a pad and five minutes on an all-star timer. If you're still speaking when the bell tolls, if you would, finish the sentence that you're on and then sit down. And after everybody's had a chance to speak for the first time, if you have something additional you want to say, then we'll give you an opportunity. But we'll put a five-minute limit on that one also. And so I think the thing to do, rather than so it's not too disorganized, would be anybody within the bar area here that would like to speak, would you stand? And I'll recognize you and we'll hear from you. The within the bar area here to speak at the hearing. Would you stand?
Sure.
Identify yourself and let your timer go.
Glenn Johnson, Texarkana.
Go ahead.
All right. I listened to the meeting Thursday night online. And it was good. I heard people talking mostly about the management of the county finances. A little bit, one gentleman at the end stood up and said, "We really hadn't said anything about the tax rate itself, but it was the purpose of the meeting." But as I read the editorial, the management is really the key issue to the tax rate. And the auditor is a little upset that 300 to 3,000 people didn't show up. He didn't show up. At any rate, when I was looking at or listening to what was going on, I was thinking there is some mismanagement. In Precinct Four, when Commissioner McCoy took office, appointed, he was in a deficit position. That was around March, April timeframe. That means we have a precinct that had already blown their budget for the rest of the year. There's very little left. And so when we talk about why we're in this kind of position, that's part of it. I think, in all fairness, we should look at all the precincts, see where they are in their budgets, before we start to point fingers at saying why this is and whose administration, anything like that. Let's look at the particulars. The only thing I really have to say about this is that, oh, I did hear something Thursday that I was curious about. It said if we didn't spend all the $5 million, that we might not have to increase the INS rate this coming year. I don't know if that's correct or not, but if somebody could answer that. If we had $2 million left over, does that mean the INS side of the property tax rate could be reduced versus the $5 million that we currently have borrowed? I inferred from what I heard Thursday that that would be the case, but I don't know if that's believable or not. But at any rate, the M&amp;O side didn't go up any. It's a 0% increase. I'd like to keep it that way. I'd like the commissioners to look at this and find a way of not raising the operation side tax rate. Financial Advisory Committee is rather confusing. Came into the meeting saying, "We're going to be $1 million in the hole," deficit, whatever that means. But yet we had almost $3 million cash available. A million nine hundred and thirty, I think it was, in the $5 million left over. There was another, what, $720,000 from the, whatever that fund was.
FEMA.
FEMA, thank you, sir. And then, anyway, another $500,000 is going to be raised fees. And they were actually advocating, well, they also advocated to borrow the $5 million, but they were advocating here that we don't spend that money. And I heard because it wouldn't have the legal right to. I'm thinking, why would you advocate to borrow money if you can't spend it? And you haven't figured out in ahead of time what procedures you need to take in order to spend that money? I'm amazed we got to spend the $3 million that we did. But I don't understand it. Maybe somebody can explain that.
I'd be glad to do that after the meeting if you'd like.
During the meeting. But anyway, after that, a day later, after receiving information from the council, they said, "We have a million seven we can spend," they suspect we're going to end the year with. So I'm not sure of the value of the Financial Advisory Committee, as I listen to some of the things they're advocating. But last thing again is, don't increase the maintenance and operations budget. Leave it at zero.
All right, thank you. Yes, a couple of guidelines here. First of all, remember you're speaking for the court. So please address the court with your comments and your hearing. And secondly, in the hearing, what we cannot allow happen for the citizens to begin to discuss among themselves, you're here to help the court, give us information, give your viewpoints, ask for information, please do that.
We can't hear.
Okay. Anybody else in the front row?
If he hears word back in the room.
In the front area, bar area. If not, let's go with the first row and see behind the bar. Would you stand? Tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Ricky Wilson. They kept that just, I came last Thursday night. I'm not a very good public speaker and I should record my point out. And that's one thing to do. But I said I was opposed to the tax increase. And I'm not just some of the, part of the court was not, or all of the courts not doing their job properly. And this is this day is done, okay? I was through talking, you know? But after the meeting, there was a couple of commissioners hit me up and basically said, "We're going to fix the problem." And one of them said, "Trust me, we're going to fix the problem." And I guess I'm asking this call, why should I trust you? And I'm serious, you know? I've worked for, for a year or so. We're broke. Half of, half of, we got plenty of money. We done. We talked to the county, they were borrowing $5 million. We just barely could borrow the money. They're crazy today. We had a rollback election. That's because, we should even have data, because our taxes should have been, should have been set above the big front. If we hadn't have done that, we wouldn't waste an eight million dollars. And the court view that the rollback was probably going to pass, and the taxes were going down. But we didn't have a plan of what we was going to do. We waited two months, hoping this view come out one. If that's good management, I don't see, you know, I'm just a little, but I, you know, I can't run my business. Now you say, "Just give me another three and a half billion dollars and we'll help your kids." You know, I could say a lot more, but I'm not going to. You know, they had to give me a response. I don't know your response here about three or three weeks when you said the tax rate is a good place. Only a thing we got to say, this is how I was told a long, long time ago. If your water bucket's got a hole in it, don't keep adding water. Biggest problem.
Very good. Anybody else on the first row? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address and you may begin.
My name's David Ablot. I live in, on 1398 Precinct Line Road in Hooks. Last, the last tax bill, I paid $24,571. County portion was 4241. I think that's enough. The first thing I'd like, if it's in order, is a show of hands from the commissioners and the judge on who's for this increase.
Who's going to start?
It's a choice. Well, I'm, I'm all for a novel idea and I'm not trying to make decisions here. Why don't you match the operations to the revenues coming in, just like the rest of us out there? Nobody else is going to be being bored or agitated.
Commissioners, if you'd like to respond at any time, you're welcome to. Please answer to the question that you asked.
I'll speak louder than that. When I, my first meeting, first week of April of this year, we were presented with a document stating that we were $3.4 million in debt. And this was the first that I had heard of it and the first that most of us had heard of it. Well, we were told that we had to borrow $4.6 million or otherwise the county could not go forward. Couldn't make that payroll, much less the payrolls for the rest of the year. So to be quite truthful, I am not pro-tax. I was the chairman of the rollback deal. And so that tells you how much I dislike taxes. But in this charge, in this case, I, I had no choice. But to vote to borrow money, it's, it's kind of like a business decision. If your business is going to fail, then you have to borrow money. Well, we had to borrow money. And in this case, it's having to be passed on to the customers, which is basically the taxpayers. I hate that more than you can imagine because I am anti-tax. Well, we borrowed $5 million to get through the end of the year. And it's looking like it may get us there. But to be quite honest with you, we have no choice in what this tax rate is on the interest and sinking side of the budget. This is calculated by the Bowie County Appraisal District to one ten thousandth of a cent based on what our total debt package is at this point, which it also includes the Howie 82 project between New Boston and Decatur. So as far as the tax rate right now, it is what it is. It can't be changed. It could be increased, but it can't be decreased. So it's, like I say, it's what the appraisal district says. We have to collect to pay the debt service. I don't know if that explanation helped. I know it did make you feel any better, but that's what happened. Thank you, Mike, for not flipping aside.
All right, the comments and responses to your.
I'd like to make a comment.
Wait a minute.
Don't throw me out.
Stand up.
Uncle Charles from New Boston.
We knew that.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Mike. And the question you asked, who voted for the tax increase? Nobody, none of these commissioners said, "Hey, guess what? I want to vote." They were put in that position because they were almost bankrupt. Now, Glenn Johnson can't figure out which side is true. Well, it took 24 noes before we found a bank that gave us the money at a very high interest rate. What does that tell you about the financial management of the county? There were 10 professionals, including the financial committee, that said the same thing. I tend to believe professionals, not politicians. So Joe Doc has invited you afterwards to understand, well, please do. And then he'll inform you very clearly. I was here when that vote was taken. The only person voted against it was Judge Lacy. And the choice we had back then is shut the county down or get the loan. That was the choice. It was that easy. It was that clear. Now, since then, there's been a lot of politics about it, but that's the choice. If you run a business, you go broke or you'll take a loan. You know, this is not rocket science, folks. Now, unfortunately, by taking that $5 million note, that has to pay back. See, some people don't like to pay anything back. So you add it to your expense line in 2015. Well, since you have to have a balanced budget and you just added $5 more million to your expense line, that's what? The revenue's got to go up for a balanced budget. You cannot present a deficit budget. That's against the law. So don't blame the commissioners. Don't blame Mike Carter. They did what they had to do. Thank you.
Did you apologize for that? Timer going off, I didn't shut it off.
Did I overspeak?
No, no, no.
Oh, thank you.
It was carryover to the last one. Please, no, no. Wait until everybody's had a chance to speak once, and then, and then I'll add you back in again.
Okay, thank you.
On the first row, anybody else wants to speak for the first time? Yes, sir. Would you tell us who you are and where you live?
Yes, William Davisville, Davistown, and Judge Lacy and the commissioner. I'm opposed to the tax increase. Reason is I do own quite a bit of property. My taxes are over $200,000 a year now. But this tax increase is going to raise it another figure, $60,000 a year. My income is from rent, just like all these people. If I've got to raise the rent on all the people I met to go back $200,000 of banks, you're going to put them out of buying. You're going to put all these people out of buying because they're not, they're all fixed income classes. You start to put this much money on them, that's going to come in their budget too, just like you need a budget yours. And I think we have a very intel to a bunch of good commissioners that know how to balance the budget. And I think if y'all talk about this, I'm sure you can figure out some way to save all this hard aid and aid funds that might go broke and they don't, they'll have to call by proxy. This county needs a power like that. But I believe you guys are smart enough, y'all can figure out what to do without hurting the whole county. Thank you for your time.
Any other ones on the front row? Yes, ma'am, would you stand? Tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Sue Anderson, and I'm from New Boston. And I didn't intend to speak when I came this morning. I was just going to listen. We have a room full of people here today because they are upset because the tax rate is going to be raised. Why are we not all here all this year that would help y'all responsible? And we wouldn't be to this point that we are right now. But we only get involved when we get mad or when you're affecting our money. And that's what upsets me. Come to the Commissioner's Court all the time, and then you can hold these guys responsible. They're all good guys. They don't mean to be messing up, but they have. Because we, as citizens, have not held them responsible from the beginning of the year, and we've let them get in this mess. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got too much.
Judge Lacy.
Who you are and where you're from.
Yes, sir. Gene Ross, from Texarkana, Texas, Liberty Isle in particular. You know, we can, we've all come together today and we could speak all day long, but really the conclusion of the matter is, like this gentleman right here said, the hole needs to be fixed somewhere. And how are we going to fix it? When are we going to fix it? Are we going, is the next time, are we going to be increased in taxes? And then the next time, if the hole is not fixed, you're going to come back again and there's going to be, somebody's going to say, "We've got to have some more taxes." So, so where does it end is what, is, so the conclusion of the whole matter is, when and where are we going to fix the hole that's in the bucket? Do you agree with me? We've got to fix the hole somehow or another. I mean, that's just natural thinking. So that's, that's my comment somehow or another. I mean, I appreciate what Mr. Davis said and several of you did too. Because, you know, we don't like paying taxes. We want to keep things rolling. And we know that, you know, the county has got to go and everything's got to roll. But somewhere, we've got to fix the hole that's in the bucket. Where, and I, the last two or three, four years, I've never seen it exactly like it is. I wonder, we don't see and hear all of this in other counties, do we? I mean, it's not, you know, but, but yet, here in Bowie County, it just seems like it's a, a constant something that's going on. So my suggestion and the conclusion of the whole matter is, fix the hole that's in the bucket. That's all I got.
Anyone standing along the side, where the front row, and then I'm going to get to the back row. Everybody standing along the side? Yes, sir. Would you tell us who you are and where you're from?
Judge Lacy, my name's David Lewis. I'm from Roots, Texas. I've been coming to Commissioner's Court for a long, long time. I've heard in Commissioner's Court meetings, people say, "We've got plenty of money. Our county's not broke." I've heard people say, "We're broke. We don't have money." I heard one commissioner, who's not here, I'm going to call his name, say, "I get different numbers every time I ask." I don't, I don't understand why we can't have straight numbers. We're in the last month of the year. I don't know that we have a, a amount that we're going to end with. We keep saying, "Maybe we'll be there, maybe we'll be there." We should have some flat, straight, accurate information to work with instead of half the Commissioner's Court getting one set of numbers and half the Court getting another set of numbers. If this is ever going to be straight then, we're going to have to get our business in order. Quit acting like we're working off a big cheating tablet and start doing stuff professionally. I, I, I know that the people who are opposed to the tax increase are opposed to it, but the money's already borrowed. We've got to pay it back. So there's no choice. We're stuck. The same group of people, I would dare say, probably were against the rollback. But now they're against this increase. So it's a 36% increase on the INS, but everybody still forgets, we, we got an 8% increase on the M&amp;O. So there's another 8% to add to the 36. And if the rollback hadn't happened, it would have been 16.87. So we've got to do a little bit different kind of business. We've got to get straight, plain English numbers. Thank you.
Good job, David. Thank you. Wait a minute, Charles. Wait till I get to the back row this second. Let me do this in an organized way. Anyone standing? Anyone standing? Now the back rows. Everybody, you stand up and tell us who you are and where you're from.
David McDaniel, from New Boston. You know, I've said this time and time again, we all got all these problems. People, everybody's got ideas. Everybody's got it. But you know what? What we need to do is go ahead and foot the field, do a full-fledged audit back about 20 years, and let's find out what the problem is. And when people really wants to know what the problem is and how to fix it, you've got to find the problem. And we all know what the problem is. It's money. Big time money. That's what it's about. Let me turn where you can get a good picture, but we need to look at tax America deal too.
This is a nice, we need to say. Sir, please address the court.
And that's exactly what we need to do. We need, what the, the census of Bowie County really needs to know what's going on here. I mean, the village needs to know what's going on here. The problem is not three or four years here. That's not the problem. Where did the problem start? And how did it start? And what went on in the problem? That's what we need to know about. And if you want to fix this, that's the only way to fix it. You're not going to fix it by jumping here at the end of it. You've got to find where it started. Now, these gentlemen right here are supposed to have enough sense to take care of that. Let's see if they do. Thank you much.
Anyone else on the back row would like to address the court? Yes. Would you please stand? Tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Emily Sabo. I'm from Texarkana, Texas. Three years and nine months ago, we had $6.7 million. You have to have transparency and you have to have somebody that knows how to take care of that money. But we don't have it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the back row? Section round for inside the bar? Yes. Would you stand and tell us who you are and where you're from?
Joe Doc, City Attorney in Boston. I'm also member of the financial advisory committee. Not far from out of order at times. Sometimes it seems like our hands are tied. Somebody asks a question and I have the answer, and there's some protocol, and I can't answer the question. So I apologize. I have, I, do you want me to address what the Financial Advisory Committee was trying to explain last time? Or should we do that somewhere else in the agenda?
This is your five.
Okay, well, my, my, my question is, there was a tax notice put in the Gazette on Friday. The tax notice says that the budget will raise more property taxes than last year's budget by $3.7 million or 24.3%. But the appraisal district says it's going to raise 5.1 million at 36% increase. I'm curious as to why the tax notice was put in the Gazette with the wrong number. That was the reason that I was speaking in the tax hearing. If you guys will allow me, I can explain what the Financial Advisory Committee was doing later on, on some of these agenda items. I think, I think our independent auditor caught through it and can shed some light on what I was trying to say as well. But this is a question I have. Is this notice correct, Judge Lacy? Because it was also on your proposed budget.
And that's going to come up. It's at the, also at the front of the proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
And if it is not correct, that is an opportunity for the commissioners to correct it.
But do you believe that it's correct?
By the time I published it, I believe it's correct.
Do you believe it?
I'm not sure now.
Okay. So wouldn't you want to correct your proposed budget?
We're operating on a changing set of figures. For instance, we'll have a more complex, complete set of figures as far as raising this budget here. On September 16th than we had in July.
But don't you think it's important for the tax rate to know the actual taxes?
Yes.
So will you be producing a correct disclosure?
I'm going to ask the people in court to do that.
That's interesting. And one other observation, William, there was $1.9 million left from the $5 million loan. You're going to pull out how much today to pay bills?
$1.9 million. I'm sure you have moved it off.
So there will be, so there will be zero left from the $5 million. So it won't be available to repay this loan. So this notice is incorrect. And I think, Judge Lacy, you should, you should correct your notice. You should correct your proposed budget. That's all I have to say.
The difference, to some extent, is explained by the calculation of two rates or $2. And we'll go that aside in the final budget review. And for the bar area, anybody else? Second time around?
Judge Lewis?
Yes, sir. Would you stand and tell us who you are and where you're from?
First, let me apologize. I'm not a very good speaker, but my name is David Smith, and I've lived in Bowie County for 34 years. I've worked at Red River. I've worked at TDC. I've worked in Bowie County. I've worked for Judge, for Sheriff Prentis for 12 years. I now work for Walmart, and I'm on disability. A lot of times, I heard back in the past, and I read all of this, that where the county was, was buying graders and other equipment for certain prices. And then when they were getting rid of the graders or whatever they were getting rid of, they weren't getting back what they had into them. I think what needs to be done, like my mother said, God rest her soul, is that if you ain't got the money, even though you want it, just like a little kid in the store, don't go out and buy it unless you've got the money in your. out and buy it unless you've got the money in your pocket. I don't have a credit card in my pocket. I pay cash, or I use a debit card for everything I buy. If I want it, then I save up the money, and I pay for it then, when I have the money. I don't go out and borrow money to pay for it. I've seen my taxes raised. I've got 17 acres of land here in New Boston. I've lived there for 34 years. My taxes started out relatively light. I put a house out there recently. They jumped three, three times what they were. I made improvements out there. They jumped another three times. I can't hardly pay my taxes now at $350 a year with my, with my service exemption and everything. But now, you're asking me to pay over $500? Some of us in this room are going to have to file bankruptcy. We are going to have no choice. So, I think US Commissioners need to put your heads together, all of y'all, and come up with a solution. Because I've seen Bowie County in the last 34 years go from a good place to live to a, and I'm, say the word. If I had my way, I would move. Thank you.
Inside the bar, wait a minute. Inside the bar area. Okay. On the first row, please, would you stand and tell us who you are and where you're from?
I'm Becky Walbers in Texarkana, and I'm glad I got to speak next because I've heard so much about this rotator, rotator, whatever they are. To me, it's a lot of money at first blush, but it's a drop in the bucket compared to the loss of the income from the jail. This is the way I see it. I could be wrong, and I'd be glad to recount my statement. But Bowie County was able to achieve that large amount of surplus that Ms. Sabo referred to due to the income we received from prisoners around the, around the state, around the United States. We had income from that. And when the jail closed, then what happened? We had to pay someone else for it. So, now, I didn't see any reduction in force or expenditures due to the fact that we no longer had this income from the jail. And it's a lot of money. It's not about a rotator. It's about the loss of income from the jail. That's right.
Judge Lacy? Thank you. First row and those standing on the sides. Yes. Would you stand again and tell us who you are?
David A. Blatt, Wilkes, Texas. I'd like to say, just throw this in here. All of us are citizens of Bowie County. I'm a lifelong resident of Bowie County. I'm developing a $5 million rental property project. And only where I'm developing it at, Texarkana, Arkansas, simply because of Bowie County, Texas. I'd much rather do it over here. I'm going to add about $35,000 to the Texarkana, Arkansas tax base. And I've got to do it over there because if I do it here, it'd be about $120,000 every year. That's a no-brainer. Do I want to do business somewhere? No. Am I being forced to? Yes. So, that's something to think about in developing this area. Because if things were different, I'd switch that project over here today in a heartbeat. And that's just the math of the deal. And it's something to think about. And this, this has got a large part in it.
Still on the first row, everybody standing in the first row. Please stand and tell us who you are and where you're from.
Hunter Blatt, Wilkes, Texas. Now, I'm only 20 years old, and I haven't lived a whole lot in my life. But I know that for a job, you've got to work, and you have to pay taxes, right? And that's understandable. But if I own a business, and I'm trying to keep it in business, just, um, it's on, uh, in the rental property, I can't go and borrow money if my business is dying and just keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing sometimes, you know, with business side. And why should I be held on that same plane as y'all? You know what I mean? If we're the same thing, how can I be held different than y'all? Why should y'all keep getting money if I can't get money over and over and over again? So, thank you.
I'm not sure I have the courage to stand up in 20. Thank you for being there. Somebody over in the Alcoa area over there? Yes, sir. Would you step forward and tell us who you are and where you're from?
I'm from Texarkana. I'm a commercial realtor.
Yeah. Hit, tell us your name again.
Richard Weber, Texarkana. I'm a commercial realtor in Texarkana. I work at Texarkana, Arkansas and Texas. Actually, I work over at Arkansas and Texas. Backing up what he said, businesses look at tax rates when they're looking to move and open, you know, in a county or whatever. We're seeing what he was talking about. Businesses moving to other areas. We've got businesses moving to Mount Pleasant instead of Texarkana. Businesses moving to Arkansas side instead of Texarkana, Bowie County. It's part of the whole scope of things. And I'm backing up what the young man said here. I'm in business. I've got several businesses. But you can't just keep borrowing money if your business is declining. The banks aren't going to allow you money, or they're going to loan you money at such a rate you can't afford. If your business is failing, you've got to do. It's not safe. You can't keep passing it on to the customer because customers aren't going to keep doing this. And that's what we're going to see here. We're going to lose businesses in Bowie County because of the tax rate. That's all I have to say.
Any others on the edge or in the first row? Let me come on, let me come all the way to the back row, David. Sure. Everybody, who you are and where you're from?
I'm James Prince. I'm a sheriff here in Bowie County. I'd like to address a little bit the issue of the jail. I'm glad that was brought up a moment ago. The economy is bad around our whole country. It's not just in Bowie County. I've told that even one of our neighboring counties, they're shut down four days a week, which is a cut in service to the employees and the citizens there. You have to live with what you got. We have tried very hard to fill the jail. When that jail, the business first started getting inmates, it was a good business. There was a lot of counties that actually built brand-new facilities around the state that are now having to pay for those facilities with the loss of revenue themselves. Because the economy is bad, agencies are trying to find alternative means to incarceration of their inmates. They're cutting them loose out early, putting them in drug programs and this and that, trying to save money. We are working very hard to get inmates into Bowie County. We have some. We don't have to pull. We've got actually three places right now that we're working real hard with, with our private company. When we went to the private company, it was actually brought up in commission, called one commission, that maybe we need to move all of our inmates to Limestone County. I think that's down close to Waco. That would have cost us a lot of money. The Commissioners' Court asked me to do the private company. I always done that at first. I called the Sheriff's Association in Austin. I wanted to talk to some other sheriffs who had the same program in private companies. I talked to three different sheriffs that were using that private companies. It looked like a very good deal, and I still believe it is. The private company has resources to go out and look for inmates more than what we have here, especially in a hard time when you're having to really stretch to find those inmates. They've got staff deployed just for that reason, and they're working hard at it. It's just the economy is bad everywhere. The inmates are just not there yet. And what I think about, yes, the county was making a lot of money off those inmates. They were. But when that money quits, the spending has to quit too. I don't believe the county quit its spending though. They kept the champagne appetite and beer income. I think that's a big problem. That's all I got to say. I'll answer the question.
All right. Thank you. Chill in the back row. See your hand over here. Yes, sir.
Judge Lacy, I'm David Wood from Wilkes, Texas. I'd like to say one more thing. I've heard a lot of attacks on the proposed budget. The proposed budget is the proposed budget. And if I'm wrong, I need to be corrected, but that's a working document to be studied, evaluated, corrected, changed, amended before it is an adopted budget. I just, I just don't understand why people are trying to force changes in the proposed budget before the very first public hearing is even held on the proposed budget. Would someone please explain the proposed budget process from proposal to actual adopted budget? Because I think, I think there's a confusion that the proposed budget is the final adopted budget, and I don't understand why people are attacking before the first public hearing is even held. Thank you.
I'll give a little explanation on that. A lot of people have the idea that the county judge is the chief financial officer of the county.
He is.
And maybe that has been true in the past. Texas law statutes likes to create checks and balances. What it does is it takes the responsibility for the finances of the county that you'd normally think of in a corporation, it would be under the chief financial officer, and breaks them out into several areas. For instance, the only sole responsibility the county judge has given under Texas law regarding the financial operation of the county is to set a proposed budget with the help of the county auditor. That's specified in the law. And once the judge proposes that, then it falls upon the Committee of Court to set a final budget. Now, what happens is the responsibility for making sure the county stays within that budget falls on the Committee of Court, where I have one of five votes. Also, it falls upon the auditor, who is responsible for seeing that we are compliant. And also, it falls upon the treasurer. I'm sure I saw the treasurer here today. Okay. Doorway over there. To the extent that if there are bills approved to be paid by the Committee of Court, and there's not enough money available to pay those bills, then the state law actually specifies a quarter which is to pay the bills, but not beyond what money is available. And so, it's spread around so that several offices and a number of people have that total responsibility. And I think the reason for that is probably in the past, 100 years ago or whatever, that when counties had a chief financial officer, they were in office for a long time, there tended not to be the checks and balances that were needed. So, over the time, state law has set it up and spread out the responsibilities of what you think of as a chief financial officer, and scattered those around to several panjites so that there aren't the checks and balances. And all of those people are present here today, and we're here to hear from you, and we're making those. And, but that's my understanding of the budget process. One of the hardest things we've had to do has been coming in these last two months of the year, the budget year, and to corral our department's spending to stay within the budget. The way state law is written, we're not supposed to have very many adjustments to budget, or else the budget starts the recent meeting. And so, this is something we all work together on, because the county judge has not had the authority to step over to elected officials or judicially appointed officials' office and tell them how to run, how to run their office. I have to stay within the areas that Texas law gives to me. Wait just a second. I'm still in the back row. Second time around. And I thought I saw a hand in the back. Yes. Would you stand and tell us again who you are?
I'm Emily Sabo. I'm from Texarkana, Texas. And I would like to speak on the sheriff's department. My husband was sheriff here in Bowie County for eight years. He had 10 people that worked for him. And all I've heard here lately, and there's good men on the sheriff's department, but they were hired. I'm telling you that the sheriff's office could work with less people and pay the people that he did have more money and not have to ask for any more money. What is the budget? $4.1 million? That's a lot of money. And there's always going to be criminals. And you can get them in your jail if you go out and work at it and do what you have to do to be the sheriff. And I worked for James Prince, tried to help him get in office, but I don't see eye to eye with the things that he's doing. Thank you.
Anybody else on the back row? Come around the third row, on the inside of the bar area. Yes, would you stand and tell us who you are again?
Joe Dyke, CPA, in Boston. I'd kind of like to respond to, I forgot his name. David Wood. Talking about people attacking the proposed budget. I assume you're talking about me, because I just said something about the proposed budget. I hope you don't feel like I'm attacking the budget. I think I'm pointing out a glaring error. We borrowed $5 million. Got to pay it back February 2015. Your proposed budget says you're only going to raise 3.7, but the appraisal district says we've got to raise 5.1. I think that's an error. I'm simply pointing out an error. And Judge, you keep saying you're not the chief financial officer. You're the chief budget officer. It does say that in the statute. And if someone points out a glaring error, I would think you would want to, to correct it. But it appears that you're trying to force the Commissioners to change the budget, so politically, you can vote no, and then you didn't raise the taxes, the Commissioners did. So, if you vote yes, when the Commissioners correct the budget, I would agree with you that we need to all collectively talk about it. But if they change the budget and you vote no, then you're being political.
And I would remind you, we're talking about some proposed tax rate today.
That's what I was talking about. Exactly.
We're going to have the proposed tax budget here. Make a note of it, please. And we will move to Central Jury Room for that at 6:00. It'll be tomorrow evening, sorry, at 8:00 at the 16th, September 16, 6:00 PM. We'll have to hear a call on the proposed budget. All right. Last time through, the front, yes, David, tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name's Robert Worthing. I was also appointed to the Bowie County Financial Advisory Committee. I live in Texarkana, Texas. I'm going to be giving a presentation here in the regular meeting. If you want to stick around for that, I think I may be able to shed a little bit of light on some of the issues that some of y'all have brought up. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that people just do not know about. And there's a lot of misinformation out there. I'm not going to go into all of that right now. But if anybody wants to contact me, I will try to answer your questions best I can after these meetings at another time. And I will do my best to do that. But like I said, there's a lot of misinformation around, and if you'd like to stick around, I hope I can shed a little bit of light on that. Thank you.
Last time through, part of the bar area. Yes, you're kind of on the fringe, but go ahead. Who you are?
My name is Ken Black. I live in Texarkana. And I would just like to say, I'm probably not a person in here. Doesn't have to prepare budgets for business and/or households. You have to live within those budgets. Like the gentleman down there said, if you want something, maybe you don't need it, but you want it. You wait until you can't afford it. Now, the only people that I know of that can live outside their budget and get away with it is in Washington, DC. This is Bowie County. We're not Washington, DC. And that's about all I have to say except for one thing. There's ways to trim a budget. When I worked before I retired, I had to prepare a budget every year. Capital projects, capital expenditures. capital expenditures. You don't need them, you don't pay them, you don't buy them now. Wait and fix what you've got. And in response to another statement, the last place I think you should get would be in our law enforcement. You look in the paper every day. There's so much crime. I'm not sure we have enough to deal with. I can imagine there are a lot of diseases.
Presents the bills to y'all on what needs to be paid, and that Donna only writes the checks and sends them out, but that y'all, you and the commissioners, make the decision of what can be paid. But with the explanation that you gave, you're putting Ty and Donna as responsible too. So would you correct that for me?
Yes. We go ahead to, the law specifically also gives responsibility to make sure where the financial
Of course, I am the law.
To the county auditor. In fact, I think it's coming up a little later on in the presentation. And secondly,
We can't hear you. We can't hear you further.
We can't hear you.
The county auditor is responsible to present all of the invoices to us. And there are times that huge sums of money that was due and payable and bills that already come in were not presented to committee of court. And then later we found out that we had to pay those back bills. And so there's a responsibility, which now I think you've assured each time that I ask, that there are not any.
Yes, and I would like to say something else, too. Every time I told you we were holding bills, you were notified. All the court was notified in court of what I was holding, the sound and the by-state payment. Now, when you say huge sums of money, what else were you talking about?
Not always. Were we told here?
Yes, you were. Yes, you were.
The question wasn't even asked.
I don't know whether it was asked or not, but you were told.
We assumed that it was all being presented to us.
Well, you know what "assumed" means.
This is what I'm not understanding, Judge. I came once before, and I asked for unity among y'all. I think you're all good guys. I have nothing against any of y'all. I just think that you're making mistakes that you should not be making. Our county is in a horrible, a horrible condition. I'm ashamed to say that. I'm from Bowie County, and I have to attend a lot of other counties with the position of sickness. And they laugh in my face, and that hurts me because I've always been proud to say, I'm from Bowie County, I'm from New Boston. And now I hesitate to say that. But laying blame on somebody else is not going to solve this solution. It is not going to get to the end of the problem. Take responsibility for what you have done, because just like I have to do. If I make a mistake, I'm the one that's accountable for it. And I think that's what needs to happen right now. You need to take responsibility for what you have done, the mistakes that have happened. And I know we're going back 20 years, 30 years, or all of that. That has nothing to do with what's going on right now. We've got to solve the problem that's right now before us. And so I know there has to be a solution. Y'all appointed an advisory board, and then you laugh in their face whenever they come to you. And these are all smart guys that y'all each appointed. But you laugh in their face when they come to you and say, this is what we think you need to do. And you disregard it. That is not making intelligent decisions. And I think all of y'all must be wise men. You wouldn't be where you are. Or let me say this. At least people thought you were wise people.
All right, we're going back to the, oh, on this row here. Okay, on the first row. All right. Becky, once again, tell us who you are.
I'm Kate Tar from New Boston. If you recall, I made a public comment presentation about two months ago when I noticed that the run rate, run rate meaning the amount of money that we pay, county pays close to over $2 million a month. All of a sudden dropped, one month to $400,000. And in that meeting, it was explained that Mr. Ty had to hold back funds, otherwise he couldn't meet payroll. And so in one sense, he was trying to act in the best interest of the county and make sure that paychecks didn't bounce. And then when he did that, he got lambasted for not doing what he's supposed to do by Texas law or whatever law. I gave you, I couldn't do your job, sir. And I appreciate you trying to put some business sense and protect payroll and the county employees by doing what you did. And by doing that, of course, yeah, you withheld payments, like a million dollars. If you don't, if you wouldn't have withheld payments for a million dollars, a lot of you wouldn't have got to pay paychecks and share of you too. Wouldn't it be heck if you went to the bank and your check bounced because there was no money? Think about that.
Back row, final comments. Aside. Yes, sir. Tell us who you are.
Daryl Thompson from Texas County, Texas.
Say it, would you please say that again?
Daryl Thompson from Texas County, Texas. I'm retired. I worked for a large industrial corporation for 41 years. I don't know anything about the county finances or budget, how it works. And this is the first meeting I've been in, reading the news. I do know with what I make, if I overspend, I can't just go and say, hey, I'd like to have more money. It doesn't work that way. I've got my fixed income, worked really hard for it for many years, really hard. I just can't overspend. In those years, I prepared lots of budgets. I don't understand how it came down to the end of the year that all of a sudden $5 million is done. My budget every year, every month or quarter, if I was over, I was calling the carpet to answer, why? I was just not allowed to say, oh, in a year, $5 million. But all of a sudden, I've got to have more money? Didn't work that way. Practically, again, I don't understand public finance. I don't understand how that happened. And it seems, we've seen these type of things happen in our county before. And then just reading, it seems to me like a lot of it started, all of a sudden, we're going to spend money on Highway 82. Definitely need it. But all of a sudden, that seemed to, from my opinion, start everything rolling along. No one seemed to know what was going on. I can't understand how the county commissioners and the court did not know that we were overspending the budget and not do anything about it. In my position where I was at in my company, I was held accountable. Believe me, I did that, I would be gone pretty quickly. Everybody understood that process. I went to shareholders' money, said, sorry, guys, $5 million short. Didn't work that way. Did not work that way. Now, on this proposed, I understand we've got to pare money back, and I understand how that works. And since I want to talk about the money spent, it has got to be paid back. If I want to pay it, no. That's just the way it is. I'm very interested in this next budget, how you guys are going to keep coming back and saying next year, oh, we overspent the budget by $5 million. Or the budget includes $5 million, and this is going to be your tax rate from this point forward. And someone says the hole has got to be fixed, and you've got to get expenditures and revenue in line. That's all there is to it. Thank you.
All right. Back row, last time around. Yes, sir.
Just let's see, I'm David Wood, Woods, Texas. And I spoke first about accurate numbers, getting the correct information out. Just a while ago, I heard a little bit of a tit and tat between you and William, where yes, it is, no, it didn't, yes, it did, no, it didn't. And I will put that aside. I was sitting right here in commissioners' court when William presented a bill for $48,000 that the district judges were withholding that neither him nor you knew about. We can't work, you can't prepare a budget if you've got $48,000, $50,000 of expenses to pay that you don't even know about. And that's what I'm trying to say is, we've got to, we've got to have accurate information between all the people. You can't hold back money when we're in a tight spot, and we can't make bills, and we're laying people off, and cutting people's checks, borrowing $5 million, and having people holding bills back that nobody knows about, and not even at least a head start of to plan or budget. So that just reinforced what I tried to say at the start. I was here when that $48,000 got presented, and it wasn't a person in this court had anything to do with it. It was just slapped on.
May I address that?
Yes.
I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but my office did not hold those bills. They were held by the county court at law judge.
That's what I said.
You said district judge. It was the county court at law judge. He was holding bills that were due lawyers. I can't tell them what we're not paying if I don't know what it is.
That's right. That's right.
So I didn't withhold anything unless they knew about it. Like Mr. Tar said.
Sorry to talk out of turn, but I didn't claim that you knew it or they knew it. Nobody knew it.
We're talking about a $23 million budget, and you're talking about $48,000. Now, drop in the bucket compared to what he's got to do for a budget.
It was our money.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. Sure.
All right, let's come back to the hearing if we could. And we're here in here for you. And if we have a good comments. Here to close, Judge lazy.
Yes. I have a comment. Yes. If I may. These figures that I'm about to give you came from, these figures I'm about to give you came from my audited annual financial report. Okay? We'll look at 2010. From this report, our cash and investments were $5,265,565. Our total fund balance was $5,729,596. We go to 2012. Our annual financial report cash and investments was $721,720. Our total fund balance was $51,866. In that process, over $3 million was paid in questionable debts. And also in that area, we lost some revenue from the Corrections Institute. So moving to 2013, and these are all reports from September 30th going into a new fiscal year. 2013, our cash and investments was $0. We had nothing. Total fund balance was $474,650. 2010 to 2013, our fund balance reduction was $5,254,946. Now, the gentleman over here said, you know, we've got to fix the hole. Okay, Mr. Pat McCoy, a prior commissioner, kept telling us and the county, we're broke. Okay? No one would want to listen. All right? What we did to combat this issue, that 2013 budget was amended by the commissioners' court to start with. And then in March of that 2013, we amended the budget again by reducing it a little under $900,000. Okay? 2014, the Bowie County residents were hit with a tax rollback agenda, which they passed, that cost the county another $500,000. That put us further into the red ink that we didn't have. So July 2014, the commissioners amended the budget again with department salary reductions, which hurt my department, everybody else that's here, for approximately $1 million. And to top that, these four commissioners sitting up here, they're not doing their job, cut their travel allowance by 50%. So when it comes to saying that we're not doing our job, we're not being responsible, not being responsible, I will have to have an issue with that. The tax anticipation loan that we took out for $5 million was to complete the year and pay salaries. I can assure you, if that loan had not been taken out, this courthouse would have been closed down. People would have been sent home with no salaries. Our 2014, 2015 debt obligation is $6,986,923, which includes the $5 million loan. And that will be repaid out of the tax increase on our INS side, which as posted in our proposed budget, the increase will be, or this will be .47360 per $100, and will raise $3,782,915. And this is for a one-year increase only. Good God willing, when we go back into 2015 and do a new budget, we can reduce taxes. But we've got to get from where we're at now to where we've got to go, and we've got to do what we've got to do to get there. That's all I got to say.
I didn't put the timer on yet.